I'd like to call the January 12th Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could remain standing for a moment of silence to honor Franklin Williams, a former educator in the district who passed away on December 3rd. Thank you. I'm going to start with an introduction of members, please.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
We do not have student representatives today. We will move to the warrants. Consent Agenda A, warrants and minutes of meeting.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
Second. Any discussion? Call for a vote for this item. Those who approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And any...
Abstentions.
Abstentions.
I did this last meeting and I'm so glad that I'm not the only one.
Six years of meetings and I've heard it and when I have to do it, I freak out. I'm so sorry. Okay, that has passed. Next on the agenda is public forum. Is anyone here in the public that would like to share information or concerns with the committee? Okay. We will move on to school committee items and this is one of those great nights that we are going to start with student recognition and defer to Dr. DeFalco.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We are super, super excited to have a full house tonight and as the school committee knows, we've taken the past few meetings to continue to recognize and honor the greatness that lies within all of our students and we've taken a little bit of a different focus each time we've asked students and families and staff to join us for recognition. And tonight is a recognition of students and something that I am so passionate about. It is so important, not only to our school system, to our towns, but also to our state, to our nation, frankly, to our world, and that is leadership. We are here tonight to recognize and honor our students who are fulfilling major leadership roles within all of our schools. And so when we think about leadership, we really think about usually, at least in a school setting like your National Honor Society of Students, and we are absolutely recognizing those students in our, of course, our student council and we're going to recognize those students too, but we have leadership in so many other ways and we're going to recognize other groups tonight that we're really excited about, all the way down grade-wise to the JFK AFM complex, we'll be recognizing our ambassadors and of course, our Chargers for Change, our social justice group. So we're very honored to have all of our students and families here this evening, our staff, of course, and if it's okay with the committee, it'd be great to have the students from each group maybe come up together with their principal and we can do a nice photo. Tammy, I don't know if you want to fill in for Erin and we can get a nice picture. We have a certificate for each group. We need to do individual certificates because it was a little touch and go in terms of which families could make it and who couldn't, so we have one for each group for the group representatives here this evening to bring back and present and I hope that you're able to hang these in the office and you should be proud. We are so, so very proud of you because leadership outside of the classroom usually leads to leadership inside of the classroom and that is just such an important thing for so many different reasons. So with that, if we could start with our, and I'm going to come around if that's okay. If you want to come, Slimiu. We'll start with our youngest leaders that are here from the JFK AFM complex. Dr. Runka, if you want to join us, and these are our student ambassadors. So could our student ambassadors from the complex come up? May Dr. Runka, when they come up here, if you could explain just very briefly to everybody what their roles are because they are really, really important to the school community.
So basically, a few years, a couple of years ago, we wanted to create a leadership program and it's similar to student council, but we didn't want to take away from the middle school, so we came up with the student ambassador. So it's very similar to the student council. So they have to apply for it, they have to write an essay, they have to explain why they think they should be a student leader representing a larger body, correct? And the process was pretty lengthy and so these were selected and they do ranging from helping out with school events and telling me what to do. Or tell on me that I get hit by a ball today doing dodgeball. So they really, really take on that leadership role. We don't, Mrs. Velay, she wants the program, I can't take credit, she and Mrs. Martino, and we don't really make any decision on events without them. So they really take on that leadership role and really, really, really proud of them.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you to our student ambassadors. And next we have our National Junior Honor Society students. If you want to join us up front, our National Junior Honor Society students, let's get going.
Do you have anybody here today from National? Yay! I'm glad you're here. So Clover is representative in a number of different leadership groups. I think you're probably just going to hang out up here with me for a few minutes. National Junior Honor Society is an application process, correct? You apply to be a part of it? Yep. You have to meet criteria to be invited to join and one of the important components of National Junior Honor Society is a service project and our middle school students are going to start working on their service projects soon. Do you know what yours is going to be yet? Not to mention our spot.
I'm doing a product dress.
That's fantastic. Well done. And while I have Clover here, she has also been chosen to represent Millville in Project 351, which is a statewide community service leadership project and you're going to be kicking that off this Saturday, right? So that's fantastic. We're very lucky to have you here and Jill, wherever you are, you are very lucky to be getting her.
And she's going to our academy, so I share it.
Yes. So that's...
Excellent. And we have a Project 351 ambassador.
Oh, look at that! Oh, here, you have more hands?
Take a quick photo? Anyone got it?
Oh, yes.
I mean, I saw one back there somewhere.
No, but I was going to send it to everybody, so. Three, two, one. Got it.
Congratulations. And next is our middle school student council. So if you are in the middle school...
Let's go! Come on, let's go! Yeah!
Now you have company.
So student council is the student government of the middle school. Do you guys want to talk? Do you want to tell them what you've worked on this year? What you are working on this year? Go for it. You can be brave.
Well, so me and Clover, we're in the eighth grade academy, so we are able to make it every morning. So we go during lunches and we've kind of been working on trying to make more positive like community around here and kind of have a little more fun around here.
Yeah! Some climate and culture work. How about we're planning on a snowball, correct? They browbeat me into accepting the name. I told them we're middle schoolers, dances are for high school, but they would not accept, they wouldn't accept any name other than the snowball. So we're having a social that's a ball, but it's not a dance. Don't ask, it's complicated. It's middle school. Yes, it's middle school. Exactly, it's middle school. Would you like to say anything else about what you work on? Your goals, your aspirations? That's okay.
They are true to middle school.
Yes. They're wonderful and we're proud of them and so happy to have them.
Congratulations.
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
And our middle school Chargers for Change group?
Yes.
And we have the sisters and these are my running buddies, by the way. They're both of them are excellent runners. Mr. Athletic Director, keep that.
Noted. So if I understand correctly, Chargers for Change started at the high school and this is a branch out of that organization and this is really about social justice. My understanding this year is that the middle school chapter has been really working on mental health awareness, yes? Do you want to speak about that or should I just leave it?
We're doing like an article about self-care and how to be careful about that.
Okay, so an article on self-care, how to take care of yourself at home, things that middle school kids need, like stress management, because when you are like these girls, you're involved in a lot, you keep excellent grades and you have to make sure you're taking time for yourself. So that's, Chargers for Change is new and in good hands, so thank you. I'm proud of you. Perfect.
Thank you, middle school.
Thanks, middle school.
And high schools, do we have anyone here from National Honor Society, from the high school? Yes.
You don't need to be this big.
Welcome, welcome. Principal Fowles, would you like to join us?
Yes, like the...
You want a picture?
Oh, yeah. We do that initially.
Lovely squallers here.
We're a part of the National Honor Society, which like the middle school, you have to apply to get into writing essays, having a high three-point average and community service is a huge part of what we do. Currently, we're working on a winter clothing drive, Japanese hats and stuff like that's being donated to donate to the Blackstone Food Pantry and giving it to them. And in March, we have our annual empty bowl dinner coming up where we make bowls, fundraise them off, and I'll proceed that week that night, go to the Blackstone Food Pantry as well.
And the bowls are awesome. And there is a round.
Congratulations.
I have to move so I can get Jason.
Oh, yeah, no, I'll stay.
There, got you. Okay.
Next, our high school student council, BMR Stuko.
It's like we're tagging you back in. So I'm in the high school student council. We do a lot of the school events, like the pep rally, a lot of dances, like homecoming, we do spirit days, leading up to pep rally, we have a spirit week. It's a whole lot of planning goes into everything and basically Stuko's behind most of it, so we kind of play and admin a lot to make sure that school is a more fun and open place, that's not just all about academics.
And the one thing coming up is anything but a backpack. That is a huge event. Last year, somebody brought the recycle bin, like the little recycle bin and reached in and get their...
Thank you, Stuko. Our chapter of Chargers for Change at the high school, again, this is our social justice group. Yes, I recognize some of our charges, our C for C kids. And this is such an important group and I would encourage all of you to think about joining this C for C group because, as you know, our school district is so focused on becoming and really building a system where everyone is welcome and belongs and this group is so important. It is such a helpful driver behind it. So do you want to talk a little bit about the good work here?
Yeah, so basically, right now, what we're doing is we want to set up a food pantry at our school somewhere near the cafeteria, because ours is basically focusing right now on food insecurity and trying to make people like overcome that maybe if they're insecure about maybe needing some food, like just to bring home and if they don't have the necessary materials at home or anything. So right now, we're just trying to contact the stores and maybe get them set up, gift cards and different food and new recipes for them to bring home over like breaks and different stuff. Just those people.
Food insecurity against social justice.
Yeah.
That's great. Thanks, Mark. So a huge thank you to all of our student leadership groups, to our younger students. Look at the pathway that is in front of you. You have opportunities at middle school, opportunities at the high school, and there are leadership opportunities that we're not here tonight. We have a men's leadership group at the high school where we do a lot of service learning. We're going to hear about that in a future meeting, but to our young men out there, you know, one of the things, I don't know if you noticed it, but I noticed it, a lot of our leadership across the middle and high school are young ladies, right? Which is awesome, but where are my boys? We've got to get the guys up here too. And so there are opportunities to do that. So, you know, stay focused. Leadership is a journey. It's not a one and done. I've been in formal leadership a very long time. I'm still not good at it, so you got to stick with it, you got to keep working, you got to keep focused, but we're really grateful for everything that you do for our school system. So thank you so much to our students and families and to our staff that make this all possible. So a big congratulations to everybody.
Thank you all. I thank you all, students, parents. We all realize as people who are on this board that we need the doers of the world and you guys are it, so we'll let you guys go unless you want to stay for some more exciting, fun to come. Like, when did everybody get so tall? I was almost in the front row at the elementary school. Right?
When I went from always being like in the back row of family photos, now I'm like, I'm almost the shortest one in the family photo.
I know. You guys are scooting down because I'm not moving up front.
I think every day, my 10-year-old stands up and he's like, I'm almost there.
Oh, sure, yeah, just take a picture.
I'm like, I know.
During your email, I think I'm probably one of the only Tammys in the district.
But you'll always be my babe.
You're welcome.
Babies always try to turn.
No matter how much I don't want to admit it.
I saw some students here that didn't get recognized and wondering what happened. If there's a group in the, so I'll invite them back if they do. There were a few kids.
Okay.
I'm not showing them up, but I'm just going to hit the bathroom real quick.
Sure. So our next item on the agenda is the Knights of Columbus request for us to accept an award for two students from the class of 2023, each to receive a $500 scholarship in memory of James Larrin. Mr. Larrin was a great supporter of the district and I know that I personally played in a golf tournament to honor Mr. Larrin over the summer and so we do need to make a motion to accept these two $500 scholarships.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
The Larrin family is... They're, they're, they're a good family. I know, I met them and it's heartwarming to see that money coming in in memory of him. Special, special family.
Indeed. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? And any...
Abstentions.
Abstentions.
We're just all glad we're not the one in the seat, so.
I don't know what, it's like a mental block. Any abstentions? Motion passes and thank you to the Knights of Columbus at Divine Mercy Church for not only honoring Mr. Larrin, but choosing to use the money raised to support students in our district. We are very appreciative and again, his memory and legacy will carry on, which is awesome, so thank you all for that. Next, we go to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm happy to be here this evening to talk about some really important items and activities that are happening across the school system, but we're going to start with an update from Athletic Director, Mr. Yoder, if you want to join us up front.
Yeah.
And I know there's a lot going on in athletics and I'm sure you are very eager to share about the good work that's happening across our different sports teams this winter. Definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Nope. No worries.
I'm okay. I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so here I just have a winter update. If you have any questions for the fall or anything going forward, feel free. It's our for those questions up, but we can just kind of go down the list here and stop me whenever. So cheer, plenty of, plenty of girls this year. 20 student athletes total, that's between the middle and high school. Competition season is on the way, which is a big time for them, you know, they're practicing long hours and whatnot. The three we have scheduled are at BBT, King Philip, and Tri Valley and they were just outfitted with new uniforms. They're looking awesome.
I think they debuted them last night at the girls varsity game.
Yeah.
They looked pretty sharp out there.
Yeah, they're super happy about it, so I was glad we could do that. They were a little more expensive than what we budgeted for in years past, but it's okay because we saved some money in the fall, so. Boys basketball, so we were lucky enough to fill all three levels. Forty-two players, we didn't have to cut a single kid, so everybody that dried out is playing, which is great. I put records here, I mean, sometimes they're telling, sometimes not, but you can see that the younger kids are really, we have a lot of good athletes, it seems like, in the middle school and younger high school grades. So especially with the boys team, it's, we're in a rebuilding phase. Varsity's been struggling this year, but they're young, no seniors, so.
They're still a joy to watch.
And they, yeah, exactly. Erin, Coach Janabali's a great coach and so they're having fun and they're fun to watch. But that being said, most likely, I put there on the last bullet, most likely not going to qualify for the postseason. Just something to note there. Girls basketball, all three levels as well, we had to, we had to do that a little differently because less than numbers. So you see there, 24 players total, not a lot of interest in the middle school. Coach Kevin McCourt had to do some legwork recruiting, but we were able to get enough girls to participate in their learning. Actually have a couple of wins, which was awesome. So, yeah, with all these sports, whatever the season, it's super important that we keep all three levels when possible so that these kids don't miss out on years of development. And as you can see, the high school is doing very well. A couple eighth grade girls are contributing at the high school level, as you can see there with the JV record and then varsity, they're having a pretty good season as well and probably will qualify for postseason play.
I'd like to make a note about how the Clark, the Clark Tournament, this will be the first year that they have girls, a girls division.
Really?
So it's been boys for, I don't know, 50, 75 years.
Eighty years.
How many?
Eighty, I think.
Eighty? Yeah, so it's great.
Yeah.
Love it.
Yeah, first year, first year for the girls tournament, only eight teams qualify. We might, but if we don't, then there's the CMS tournament or state tournament, but yes.
Any postseason play will be a great finale for the six seniors that are on that team. That'll be the, what they strive for every year, so.
All right.
That'll be great.
They're a close-knit group, it seems like. It's only my first year, but it seems close. Indoor track and running in general, we've tried a few different methods to gather some more interest, but unfortunately, there wasn't much this winter, so we didn't have enough for a team. Further, not enough to co-op, so the state's really cracking down on co-ops where they're not just going to take one kid from BMR, one kid from Hope Dale to go run at Knitmuck. It needs to be two schools that are hurting that combine to make a team. So for that reason, you know, our few kids who trickled in late that wanted to participate weren't able to, but they can, they do have the opportunity to participate in state tournaments at the end of the season if they want, in their specific events. The swim co-op, we had several high schoolers that were interested and that are participating with Grafton. I believe they swim in Westboro, so it's a hike, but they got a carpool thing going and they're having fun. I think with those numbers, you know, if we keep, you know, keep pushing it a little bit, we could possibly have a swim team in the future. You know, there's a lot more that goes into that, like renting space, which would most likely be Whitemsville. Cool, but just something to think about. The hockey co-op, we co-op with Bellingham and Millis. Bellingham is the host school. We have two kids playing with them, one of them being their best player and carries them. He's a BMR kid. So they're doing the best they can over there. I don't think, I think we're a long way from hockey coming back to BMR. I don't know how long the district had it in the first place, maybe someone who's been here longer knows, but.
It's been a long time. I think my husband coached a very long time ago.
Yeah.
For one season.
Right.
There was a lull, but, and then with Milford and then I think it's the fifth year with Bellingham. My son played through high school.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I think this is year five that we've co-opted with Bellingham.
Yeah. So all these, these co-ops, and I can report back at the end of the year, but they're going to start cracking down and changing how it works. So I would say next year, you know, say we have a kid that wants to swim or a kid that wants to play hockey, it might not be an option, unfortunately. Sam, do they say why they're doing that? Why would they take those opportunities from the kids?
Yeah, that stinks.
Right. So for example, like last year, I believe the Auburn girls hockey team did very well, went to like the state finals against a single town. That single town complains because Auburn, Auburn High School girls hockey is actually Auburn, Millbury, you know, several towns combined, so it's a competitive...
But it's not a stacked team, like, yeah.
Right.
That's hard to...
It's not a recruiting thing.
Well, but does it, does your team being good just in turn recruit players, you know, which, which is going to be the issue for us if we lose all of these athletes because they're going to school choice to swim or school choice to, to play hockey. I mean, I, you know, kids are going to school choice to play that sport if they have a chance to be a...
end of the season, if they want, in their specific uh, events. Uh, the swim co-op, we had several high schoolers that were interested, um, and that are participating with Grafton. Um, I believe they swim in Westboro, so it's, it's a hike, but they get, they got a carpool thing going and, um, they're having fun. I think with those numbers, you know, if we keep, you know, keep pushing it a little bit, uh, we could possibly have a swim team in the future. You know, there's a lot more that goes into that, like renting space, which would most likely be Whitemsville. Uh, cool, but just something to think about. Uh, the hockey co-op, we co-op with Bellingham and Milis. Bellingham is the host school. We have uh, two kids playing with them. Um, one of them being their best player and carries them, he's a BMR kid. Uh, so they're doing the best they can over there. Uh, I don't think, I think we're a long way from hockey, coming back to BMR. Uh, I don't know how long the district had it in the first place, maybe someone who's been here longer knows, but.
It's been a long time. I think my husband coached a, a very long time ago.
Yeah.
For one season.
Right.
There was a lull, but, and then they were with Milford, and then I think it's the fifth year with Bellingham. My son played um, through high school.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I think this is year five that we've co-opted with Bellingham.
Yeah. So all these, these co-ops, and I can report back at the end of the year, but they're gonna start cracking down and changing how it works. So, I would say next year, you know, say we have a kid that wants to swim or a kid that wants to play hockey, it might not be an option, unfortunately.
Sam, did they say why they're, why they're doing that? Like, why would they take those opportunities from the kids?
Yeah, that stinks.
Right. Um, so, for example, like last year, I believe the Auburn girls hockey team did very well, went to like the state finals against a single town. Um, that single town complains because Auburn, Auburn High School Girls Hockey is actually Auburn, Millbury, you know, several towns combined. So it's a competitive.
But it's not a stacked team, like, yeah.
Right.
That's hard to.
It, it's not a recruiting thing, it's just.
Well, but does it, does your team being good just in turn recruit players, you know, which, which is the gonna, going to be the issue for us if we lose all of these athletes because they're going to school choice to swim or school choice to.
Yeah.
To play hockey, I mean, I, you know, um, kids are gonna school choice to play that sport if they have a chance to be able to get scholarship, especially, I mean, when you talk about swim, when we started swim, um, it's, it's a sport that you can get, you know, some scholarship money for. Um, all of these, obviously you can, but um, you know, it's too bad because it, it just pushes the school choice envelope a little bit more. And, and you know, if you're a small district like us, I mean, what do you, what do you do?
Has that cho- has that decision been made?
No, no.
We only have three hundred and eighty people.
Coming, I believe.
I'd like to add to that. So, you know, we have a small student population, we can't support all this.
All these sports.
All these sports. It's impossible for our school. And, you know, they, like swimming, we should be allowed to go to meets and compete where we're not scoring, but the kids still get to their times and, you know, if it's a qualifying for a state meet, uh, you know, we should push to, to be able to let them still compete.
Yeah.
They might not be scoring at these meets and hockey, you, you can't do that, but swimming.
Yeah, so like.
It's just hard. It's like, whose kid do you choose not to al- allow to, to play? Like, I mean, what sports do you pick? Do you put them in a hat? Like, what do, what do you do? I mean.
But if three hockey players decide hockey is their main sport, so they're gonna school choice elsewhere, but they also are three of our soccer players and three of our baseball players.
Right, yeah, they play multi.
My, my worry is we will lose more students because, because of that issue.
It's complex.
Balance is out there.
From the MIA perspective, you know, dealing with all the.
So the MIA, um, a lot of these decisions come from the east, these bigger districts. They don't think about us, really, yeah, in their database.
They're gonna shut down programs completely. Like, Bellingham will lose their program if they can't have.
Right.
The small groups, you know.
Yeah, so.
It's unfortunate.
You know, it's an ongoing discussion and argument, but um, the letter of the, the law says, the, the reason for that co-ops exists is, is when two schools, say, BMR doesn't have enough for boys soccer, neither does Bellingham, that's a co-op.
Yep.
Not there's two kids in, at BMR that wanna play hockey, but don't, they don't have a team there.
Yeah.
You know?
I have a question, since we're talking about the MIA. So, they have some type of point format now, where, like in uh, field hockey.
Power rankings.
You're like, power rankings, you, you, the coaches like have to score those extra points, where, you know, you, you would say, you know, have mercy, uh, you put in your younger players, but because of their format of how you qualify for state tournaments and you might get a bye if you, you know, they're ranked.
Slow somebody up.
So I, I, I don't think that's a good idea either.
Well, power rankings are already a thing.
Yeah, I know.
They've been there for a couple of years. Um, there's pros and cons, I would say. Uh, a con is definitely like, for like, BMR, we played Burnco Girls Soccer. We could've beat them twenty-nothing, um, which is never okay, but if we wanted a better seed, we should've done that.
Yeah.
I think it was nine-one and they put in the freshman after the first half, but, so that's, that's, that's an issue with it. Um, overall, I think it, it creates a more fair process though across the state.
Yeah.
Power rankings, as they call it.
Okay.
So what do the power rankings determine? What, what are they, what's the, what's the, what is the pro?
So, the way.
Cause all I see is your junior, your younger players are never gonna play. I mean, we're already, I mean, you know, we're already at a point where you, these kids are practicing six days a week, and I know from my experience, there are kids that are sitting on that bench that might get two minutes of playing time a week, maybe a month, and now with that, I mean, you're never gonna put those kids in. What, what's the benefit of that?
Well, the id- the idea behind the power rankings was to create uh, more fairness across the state, so the way it used to work for postseason play is you had, um, you had a Central Mass tournament, a Central Mass state tournament, you had a Western Mass, and you had a North and South, so North Boston, South Boston. Uh, the winner of Central played the winner of West, the winner of North played the winner of South, and then those winners played for the state championship. What they found was, um, the majority of the best teams in the state in most sports are from the east, it's just bigger, more affluent towns. Um, so you had schools in the east who arguably were better that didn't make the state tournament because of that setup, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so the better of the, you know, the five better teams were fighting each other, whereas some lesser teams got in because.
Exactly, yeah.
Less competition.
So now it's a statewide.
That's why you saw volleyball, when they made the state playoffs, they traveled to the Cape, I believe it was. Where girl soccer traveled to Western Mass. Instead of.
Three and a half hours away.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in that way, it does make sense. I agree with it, but there's problems with it for sure. And it's not my decision, so.
I, I, I'm having a hard time with this one.
So ultimately, uh, can I, can you, Sam, can you just finish the, so, alright, so everybody has these rankings.
Yeah.
You blew out twenty-two teams, you're.
Like, the stronger your opponent, the better your score against them, like you might lose against a really strong opponent, but your rating is better than.
Scores after you acted in, like, sort of unsportsmanlike, if you ask me, but whatever. So then, who, who gets to go to the turn, like, what are the results of it?
Yeah.
Top thirty? How does it work?
So say, so BMR, I'll just say BMR girls soccer were division um, four this year in the state. Um, we ended up finishing thirtieth, top thirty-two make the state tournament. And that was based off our power ranking, not our record or anything.
Okay.
Because, you know, we play Sutton twice, they won the state championship. So even though we lost to them four-nothing, that's good for our power ranking.
It was only four-nothing.
Because we played a really good team.
And only lost four-nothing.
Right. It used to be either, it used to be almost strictly record, five-hundred or above, you're in.
Yep.
So.
With power rankings, five-hundred and above still gets in, plus top thirty-two, right?
It also is to deter you from going to play weaker schools to just boost up your.
Record.
That's what basically they're trying to also do. It's not, when it was, when it was, get to five-hundred, you get into the state tournament, great, well, let's go pick and choose some, some.
Your inner league games.
Wins, yeah. You know, now it's, well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, maybe penalize you, but we're not gonna, you know, give you the, the props for doing it either.
Yeah. It changes a lot too for scheduling because of these things, you know?
Where do you read about this? I'm so like intrigued.
MIA dot net or org.
And it's like, if I just type in power rankings, I'll get the.
The, uh, yeah, actually, the winter power rankings are coming out tomorrow for basketball.
Okay.
I can expect that our girls will be in there, somewhere top thirty-two in division four. Yeah.
It's only been like this a few years, though.
I think three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just about when I got out of the racket.
Just in a few months. My daughter graduated in twenty-twenty.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's different, but. Alright, so um, yeah, so the swim, the hockey, okay, and then uh, looking ahead there, um, we're gonna wrap up the winter seasons, uh, most likely at February break, if, if some teams are in the postseason, that'll go beyond. Um, but that's where it's gonna end for the most part, and then I'll talk with Principal Fallis and um, uh, people AHR to see when we can put out spring job postings. Um, looking for coaches, I know there was some coaches last year, I'm not sure if they're still interested in coaching this year. Um, so our spring sport offerings right now, baseball, softball, all three levels, track and field, middle school, high school, uh, boys and girls tennis, that's, that's a seven through twelve, and then uh, boys lacrosse, my understanding is that we co-opted with Knitmuck for the past few years. Um, so we put in for that. I was at the DVC meeting today, I put in for middle level waivers across the board, so that seventh and eighth graders can play up at the high school with no questions asked. Uh, so we're good there. And last thing, uh, resignations, our head coach of ten years, Josh Uglow, uh, is hanging them up. Um, so we're on the lookout for a head football coach. Uh, that should be posted. I put in the request for it to be posted today, so. There's that, and then our varsity volleyball coach after, I think, the same amount of time, Vanessa.
Those are two big losses.
Yeah. Uh, both good coaches. Um, so, if you know anybody, I'm just kidding, uh, we'll find somebody good. I know, uh, Craig Haynes, Mr. Haynes is uh, heavily involved in the community, he's, he's been coaching, you know, he's someone that's interested. There's plenty of people that are gonna apply, a lot of people are looking for that position, so.
Very good.
We'll see what we get.
Great sadness. Two fam- I mean, I think that, I mean, both of them are the starting coaches of both of those sports. Um, Vanessa was definitely the first and only coach of volleyball, and.
Yep.
I think Josh is probably the first and only coach of football, so, um, thank you for their years of service, for sure, and uh, I can't wait to see the, the new sports. Um, I did have a question, I can't remember what I was gonna say. Uh, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll email you if it comes to me.
Definitely.
But thank you for all that you're doing, and um, we appreciate it.
Before you go, um, there was a, a couple of weeks ago, uh, an incident on a basketball court in Massachusetts where a referee was assaulted by a player. Uh, you didn't hear about that?
I don't think so.
It was a Boston team versus Cohasset.
Cool, yeah.
I don't, I can't remember what the name of the Boston team was, it wasn't, it wasn't a normal.
So, you know, I, the basketball seems to be, uh, we, I think we need to have more uh, people at, we, as a town, like Blackstone, needs to be more welcoming to, you know, the teams that come in, we, hospitable, um, things can, and, and then it's both sides that are.
Sure.
It seems to be, uh, it needs to be more under our control. So I, I noticed Ted stepped up and, and he's, uh, he took care of a situation uh, from the other team, it wasn't really a situation, they were just, you know.
Yeah.
Going on, but it's just like, what's acceptable?
Right.
What is acceptable for, for student and fan behavior, and even the coaches at that? It's worth a dis- you know, not, maybe not here, right now, but if possibly some type of uh, work group could be put together to try to address that, and, you know, even let Blackstone lead the way to, uh, you know, address the fan and, and.
Right.
Behavior at, at games.
Yeah, um, I, 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 I came from a, a different environment. I haven't noticed anything, I've, in my opinion, the, the basketball game's been great this winter so far. Um, I've been, I make sure I'm at every game, if I'm not, I'll ask.
So I referee.
Or other people, yeah.
I'm a ref, so I go to other schools. So I was in Marlborough, Northborough game a couple of nights ago, and, you know, it was just the, the testosterone was flowing and the, you know, the kids in the sta- it was just, I, I as a referee really had to take a strong stance and, you know, like, I was technicals and, you know, putting, warning kids and.
Yeah. I think, um.
It's, it is an issue.
Oh, sure. And I can only pinpoint two incidents this year, incidents where I had to address kids.
Yeah. Um, I'm not saying that our kids are really behaving poorly.
Yeah, yeah.
Just in general.
Need to raise the bar this way.
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
I think something else to note is that there's a refereeing, not because of you. There's a refereeing iss- issue across the state, there's not enough refs, and there's a lot of inexperienced refs reffing games that they.
Shouldn't.
Can't handle, so things get out of control. Uh, and I've noticed that more so than fans and players, coaches. Just a really, uh, really poor officiating. The state knows that, um, but that's.
That combined with power rankings, uh, making the scores go up are not gonna make fans' behavior better, just saying. Um, I know what I was gonna ask you, where, what's the best place to actually find up-to-date schedules? Like, it's a Tuesday, I wanna find something to do, cause my family is in Disney without me, just for the record. Like, where can I go for the rest of the weekend?
Yeah, so.
Like, where should I be?
That also brings up another good point.
Arbiter, right?
Arbiter, right.
Arbiter?
Yes.
Is there a link on our website?
There is.
That goes there? Okay.
This says schedules in the.
Yeah, although that website is not the best and hasn't been updated since I've been here, um, that's on me. I've been in the middle of, you know, when I have time to developing this Google sites for athletics, just to make it easier for everybody, cause there's really not a, a place to go for BMR athletics. Um, so once that's ready, hopefully we can just launch that website and there's just one place for everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Next, I just wanna give a very brief, actually just a couple of brief updates. Uh, the first is on the Mass School Building Authority. Um, we had a, earlier this week, we had a community conversation. Um, I did check today, we've had almost ninety views on the video, uh, so, you know, it's not too bad in terms of people tuning in, I think there were about twenty-eight or thirty people there that were live. Uh, and uh, Erin Vanaco and Tara, myself, Scott Hebert, Jill Pilagallarani, we had an opportunity to really speak with the community about, you know, what does it mean to have been accepted in, what does the eligibility period uh, mean? Um, and so in your packets tonight, I do have for you a copy of the slide deck that we used. Um, this is on our webpage under the capital planning um, section, and I also uh, sent out on our social media, Twitter, Facebook, and it's on our webpage, a link to the video. Um, so it's, uh, it's linked right to our YouTube channel. If anyone tuning in missed it and they're curious to hear a little bit more about it, uh, by all means, jump in there, uh, you know, you can see it right on our webpage or check our social media, uh, and keep sharing that. So share that video with your friends, your family, your neighbors, you wanna make sure that people are really tuning in. Um, I will be joining the um, Blackstone Millville PTO, uh, the February meeting, I think it's the sixteenth, but I, I may be wrong about the date. Um, it's the meeting in February, um, to have a conversation with families there, uh, face to face. Um, and I know there'll be some information going out about that, um, but we need to continue the conversations, continue the momentum, um, that we've built and bringing the community together around what this uh, could mean for our students, our families, our towns. Two really important things to mention that we are going to be doing, um, we are setting up tours of the high school, so that we actually can have our community come through, uh, not when children are there, of course, uh, for safety reasons, but uh, so that we can actually get people in touring the facility, they can see the locker rooms, the science labs, uh, the classroom spaces that just so desperately need new, uh, and an update. Um, we're then going to be actually taking tours, uh, we're gonna get the yellow school buses rolling and take our community members, those who are interested, out to see newly built middle high schools. So let's show people what's possible, um, and give them an opportunity to see, um, just what we can have on our community, uh, and what our, our community and our students so, so much deserve. Um, so, lots to, uh, lots to do, lots of information to come, um, but, uh, you know, click on, you, you can click on our webpage, you'll see the capital planning, it's one of those purple blocks right there on the main page, you can click that. This PowerPoint's in there, the, the video link has been shared all over our social media, it's on our webpage as well, so tune in, ask lots of questions, and there'll be lots more of information to come. But a lot of good work happening there.
I'm raising my hand for myself. Tammy, um, are we making arrangements to meet with Board of Selectment or at Board of Selectment meetings on this specific issue to, um, I, I know obviously Blackstone Board of Selectment meetings are the hottest topic around, so they're being widely watched, now's the time to put something out there.
Yes.
Um, so, I mean, I just think, um, for, for both towns, those are the folks that are going to, um, you know, lead some of the discussion on, with FinCom and behind the scenes over there, and I think if we can get as many questions answered, I do know that obviously some of those folks, both on Board of Selectment and FinCom, and both towns are part of the capital planning, so, you know, they're able to share information, but I think, um, sharing and opening up to questions early in this process, um, I think will be helpful, and, um, knowing what people are concerned about. I mean, obviously, the, the big concern is always taxes and, and how this impacts the tax line. Um, I love the idea of. Um, I love the idea of touring the, the schools. I mean, it is what it is, right? I mean, a couple looks at our high school currently, it's just old. And, and the custodians and staff have done all that they can do to, to keep things looking as fresh and safe and keeping them safe. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, something that stands out to me is that at our joint meeting last year or the year before, we talked about kicking the can down the road on these capital projects. And, um, obviously, the, the can has been kicked for many years in the high school, um, for lots of reasons. And it, it's not just a school committee, um, kick. Everybody's kind of kicking because we know, you know, it's, it's a big, obviously, it's a big dollar amount. No one is discounting that. But if, we can't kick the can anymore. Like, this is the time that at least if we can take this project on and share the cost of it, then we can stop the can, create a, a safe environment in which our kids can be educated at the level they deserve when they stay here. And, and I think, um, having a new high school, we have new high schools all around us. Oxbridge has a new high school, brand-new track, Bellingham, the same thing. Those are our closest, Franklin, you know. You don't have to take that school bus very far around us to see new schools, so.
Douglas.
Oh, Douglas, I forgot about Douglas. Yeah, so.
Yep.
I just, um, thank you for the work you're already doing and, and we will share. And I think people watching, reach out to anybody, um, on this committee, certainly Dr. DeFalco, principals, um, Jill PG, for whatever area of concern you have. And, uh, get your questions answered now so that we're not at the last minute saying we didn't hear about it or, or whatever. So, we'll share as much as we can, but we need your help.
And, and on that note, I think the finance piece is something clearly that very, you know, is very important to a lot of people. So, we are going to be doing a virtual meeting with, uh, someone from the MSBA that specializes in finance. So, they're actually going to do a virtual session, uh, for us and for our community. We'll send the link out to everybody. Um, so, they can tune in and listen. They can hear, I mean, you know, the, the MSBA has built over 200 new, like, brand-new schools and communities. We're not the first, right? They know how to do this. Um, and so, they have their finance, uh, team that can speak to that. And they can talk to the communities about how that works and what happens when you have a feasibility study and how that gets rolled in, you know, to the overall project. If it's approved, what if you have MSBA, um, grants on other accelerated repair projects like roofs, windows, boilers, doors, which we do? What's the, the term clawback, right? Like, what's the clawback on those? How do you negotiate that into one big kind of package with MSBA? They do this all the time. This is all they do. So, I know it's new for us, but it isn't new for them. And so, they have a lot of expertise on staff, um, that are very willing to come out and talk with our, with our families. But, uh, I urge our families to, to, and our community members to tune into this stuff, right? We have 1,500 students. I get people are super busy, and we've had just over 80 views. So, right, if you do the math, not a lot of views for the number of students that we're serving. We've got over 12,000 residents in both communities. So, um, we really need people to, to really plug into this. And, uh, to your point, Tammy, yes, we will be, uh, meeting again with the Board of Selectmen. All of the information that goes out to the community, like the links for videos, the PowerPoints, I send that to them too. Uh, so that the, uh, town administrators, um, I forward everything and ask them to blast it out to the Board of Selectmen members. And I do hear from them. Um, I'll hear often from the chairs of all.
So, do you get to FinCom too?
They send it to their whole, to their boards and committee.
Okay.
Um, so, I do, I do hear from members on those different groups that will follow up and ask some questions. And actually, some of them joined us the other night at our, at our meeting. They were, one of them in particular was asking some of the questions.
Perfect.
So, that was good. So, we're, we're trying, we'll keep beating that drum. Um, and we're excited about the opportunity, for sure. This is our first meeting since we were voted in, so.
I mean, we're very lucky. I mean, it's a, it's an amazing opportunity, um, and, and it's not going to come around. So, this is our chance to make it happen.
The Mass School Building Authority will not ask B of R twice if we want their $60 million. Like, they will not ask us that twice. So, or whatever else, whatever ultimately that amount ends up being, will probably be somewhere between the 15 and 60 million. Uh, they're not going to say twice, would you like our money? Um, they're going to ask us once, and we've got a lot of work to do to get people there, so we're excited about that. Um, moving on to the next item, just briefly, I want to mention, um, because it is a very important topic to all of us, because if we are not safe, we cannot learn, we cannot do our jobs. Uh, and I know that our committee knows just how, uh, important this topic is and how serious we take it, um, uh, in the district. So, a couple of quick updates on our school safety work. Um, we do have, as our, uh, families are aware, we've sent out information, we did a virtual session last night, um, with, uh, elementary parents, and we sent out a video to elementary families about our tabletop drills and essentially what those are. Uh, and so, if you're tuning in for the first time and you're not entirely familiar with the term, uh, essentially, we run different scenarios with our students and staff over our PA, our, um, intercom system. Um, and, uh, they are essentially school intruder scenarios. And, um, each scenario, we pause and give the staff member, the classroom teacher, the counselor, whoever's with that group of students, an opportunity to process through the scenario and talk with the students how best to address that particular issue. Uh, we did these last year. Um, and again, we all would agree, it's incredibly unfortunate that we have to do these, but we embrace them and do them because safety is more important than anything. Um, and so, um, we are running those drills at the middle school, high sc, uh, high school, middle school in the complex on Tuesday of next week, the 17th. And then Milville, uh, we are doing those, um, drills with our youngest learners on the 19th. Um, I know our elementary principals and, and Jill PG ran that Q and A last night for families, uh, sent the video out. Um, so, again, to try to take the anxiety out of, it's scary. I get them, a parent too, I understand. Um, but, um, they're really important. The other thing that I would like to share, uh, that we are pleased we have in place, uh, as you know, a couple of years ago, the school district put in, um, a new state-of-the-art phone system across the district where every classroom has a phone, um, that is a voice-over IP system. It runs on our internet. Um, so, we have done something called an E-911, um, which, if any of our classrooms in any of our buildings, any of our offices in any of our buildings, contact 911, it not only shows the number that the class, the, um, the number that the phone is calling from on the 911 board, but it actually shows the building, the classroom, and where in the building they are. Um, so, there are multiple signals that go at once. Uh, one goes to the 911 switchboard, and then the other goes to the main office and the secretary to message that a 911 call has been placed from classroom such-and-such in their building. Um, it's a fairly sophisticated communication system, but every second matters. So, every piece, uh, like that, that we can put in place in the system, um, it just speeds the response time. So, there is no guesswork where the 911 call came from. It will say 303, you know, second floor, Blackstone-Milville Regional High School, and it goes right to dispatch. And then Ms. Falvis gets, um, the call, and so does Linda Salomi that, that those calls were made. So, it's just a really important feature to have. Um, and we, uh, it's, it took us a couple of months because, of course, you have to imagine, you know, we have to install, we have to test each one multiple times, we want to make sure they work. Jill got about 600 phone calls, and we tested the high school to make sure. Um, but there's nothing more important than the safety of our kids and our staff. So, um, we're happy to have that feature in place. We have notified both, uh, chiefs of police and town administrators that that feature is, uh, in place. So, just wanted to give that update. We continue to refine our safety, safety work. Um, and our last, my last item for tonight, uh, under my reports, is a walkthrough of our, uh, fiscal '24 draft. Um, and so, before you, this evening, we have a, um, a overview of our, um, FY '24 draft budget. In front of you, you have the slide deb, uh, slide deck, but you also had two, um, additional handouts. Um, the first is the, uh, total proposed FY '24 budget next to the FY '23 certified. We're going to talk about that in a minute. Um, it looks like this. This draft is already different than what was in your packets. And to our returning members, as you know, like, we're working on this for months, right? So, I, I know that you, will probably be no surprise to you that this was already different than the one you got in your packets. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that, uh, this evening, or actually, a lot about that this evening. Um, but the other document that you had in front of you, uh, was our capital budget. Um, and, uh, I'm going to walk through that just quickly before we delve into this, uh, because this really won't change. Um, and, uh, this did take quite a bit of time between myself and, uh, Unibank to make sure that we had everything in one place. Um, so, in your, on your handout for your capital budget, um, I had listed every single project, uh, that we are currently working on as it relates to fixed capital items. Um, and what's tricky for us is some of these are town-specific because it's a Milville Elementary project, or it's a complex, uh, uh, JFK AFM project, but some are district, uh, owned projects. So, we, that's when the percentage of the student enrollment comes into play. Um, and so, uh, what I wanted to ensure was in place was one document that captured all of this for all of our fixed long-term debt. And so, what you have in front of you, uh, are a few pieces of very important information. Uh, you have all of the capital costs by project. Um, to the left, you have the FY '23 amounts. Um, you have the FY '24 amounts, which I highlighted in yellow. And Carrie, I know you're very familiar with this because you get all the Unibank stuff. Um, and, um, in, uh, in the green column, I listed all of our outstanding debt. Uh, everyone needs to just see this. Like, you need to know what we have as far as our total outstanding debt. I listed what is left on each project as of July 1st before the FY '21 payments are executed. Um, and that's because we, we have to vote on that, so I'm not going to put the cart before the horse. Uh, but this is what is outstanding as of, uh, July 1st of, um, 2023, and then we would apply the FY '24 amounts to that. Um, I also thought it would be helpful for you to see the issue date. This is when all the initial, um, debt was, um, was taken on. What I did not include here is when we've refinanced things because it just gets complicated. So, I listed the initial issue, the issuance date, and I listed the initial issuance amount. So, I wanted you to be able to see, here are the projects, here's what we're currently paying, here's what we need to pay, here's what the total debt is, here's what the, uh, initial debt amounts were that we took on. Does that make sense? I thought it'd be helpful to see this all in one place, particularly as we're going down the path of what we hope, uh, will be a, a feasibility study, uh, for the district. Um, my sense is these questions are going to come up a lot. Uh, so, we need a one-stop shop in order to check in on all of this. Um, so, uh, what you'll also see listed here are two things that, that need much further discussion. The first is the asbestos work at the high school. You will see that there is an amount of $250,000 for FY '24. Um, you know, in conversations with Scott and our asbestos management group, um, you know, that could shift, but right now, we have been told, uh, by our asbestos consultant that we need to expect to pay the $250,000 for next fiscal year. Uh, however, that has not yet been confirmed by, uh, Janet from DLS. So, that, it's, it's always better to start with a larger amount and then have to walk it back, uh, to a smaller amount if we're able to. But that is what we, uh, were told, a budget for that, and as we're working through our budget season, that may change. The other amount, um, that is listed here that really doesn't belong, it's not capital, but last, uh, year for our returning members and anyone that tuned into the budget cycle last year, there was, um, there was a lot of conversation about our OPEB, which is our post-employment benefits, um, and the need to increase the amount of money that we are putting into that account. Um, it, last year, we put it in the capital line, but it's really not capital. Um, and so, there was some discussion through the, the building of FY '23. Should we just include it in the budget, or should we call it out? Um, I put it here, not for us to decide tonight, but through our workshops, we can talk about this. Um, but I want you to know that it's listed, uh, that it's very much on the radar. So, we did include it, um, on the capital worksheet. It really doesn't belong as a capital item, but, um, we can talk about, uh, where best to put that as we move forward. But this is an important part of the work. It's separate from the, from the general budget, um, but I wanted the committee to know that we are very much on this, um, and have spent more time, God bless Lynn Welch, uh, from Unibank, on selling bands and bonds and refinancing long-term debt and.
I will say, this makes so much more sense than a lot of the emails that I'm CC'd on and I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
So, I took the time to do the head wrapping.
Yeah.
To condense it to this because I too needed to be able to digest that. Um, and the thing that was really interesting, when you get these updates from our banking institutions, they're just codes. It's like Project One, you know, G O B 7894932. It doesn't tell you what it is. So, you have to do a lot of digging, um, and then looking at all the refinance dates and when that was done. But Lynn has been just incredible to, to work with on this stuff. So, uh, I was able to actually condense it to this and have it, I hope, make sense. And so, when we share this with the community, I wanted it to be in a digestible place. So, are there any questions on the actual capital at this point? It's pretty straightforward in terms of what it is. Um, and then you can see the capital totals at the bottom for both Blackstone and Milville, but that includes the 250,000 for the asbestos, uh, which that, that number is, you know, could be in flux in terms of reducing that. But I will say, hard and fast are the numbers above the asbestos numbers, the Milville boiler, the windows, um, and the boiler and windows for JFK, and the roof projects in the middle school. So, I wanted to make sure that that was very much front and center. Is it okay to go to the next?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, uh, much of the slide deck, I'm going to, uh, just quickly walk through because the committee's already seen 90% of this. Um, we know everything comes back to our district improvement strategy. We align our fiscal resources to our, our instructional, uh, plan. Budget process to date, we're all very familiar with this. I'm certainly not going to, uh, take the time to walk everybody back through this, but I will say that this slide deck will be the foundation, as the returning committee members know, for all of our budget discussions with the community. So, I'm apologizing upfront to our school committee. You will hear this multiple times. Um, and that's intentional because we want to make sure we're all using the same foundational information as we start to work with our community. So, this is our budget process to date. Since we last met on 12/9, uh, December 9th, uh, we have spent in a extraordinary amount of time on this, um, line by line, making sure that what you see in front of you tonight is really our best version of this. Sometimes we will bring to the committee kind of an all-in budget, kitchen sink included, right? I want a new pony, I want a, right, a this, I want a that. We want, you know, we're going to put an equestrian team at the high school. I mean, like, it's all in here. We didn't, we worked very hard to try to pare this down this year. Um, and all the backup is here, and I'll explain how we did it, so that what is in front of the school committee really is what we need. Um, and so, that was so we can really focus our conversations around, I think, the much bigger project, which is the need for a new high school, and put our time, effort, and energy really where that needs to go. Um, our enrollment, again, we talked through this at the last meeting. I don't want to spend a huge amount of time on this. Um, but, uh, our student enrollment is very important because these are the 1,468 faces. We saw a lot of them tonight, um, that all of this good work in all of these fiscal resources go into taking care of every day, and, and a blessing to be able to do that. Um, this is an important piece because it speaks to our accountability, right? And so, like, you know, from my vantage point, when I'm talking to the community about dollars, this is what I'm, you know, these two slides right here, this is the who. This is who we're taking care of, and this is the what, as far as the outcomes we're getting. Um, and so, this is a really important piece. And again, this isn't new information to the school committee. Um, you all spend such a large amount of time together on data, which I think is really important in terms of how our kids are doing. But it is important to, you know, to have a sense of our 2022 state accountability data. Um, you know, this is what we're doing with our money and the outcome we're getting as a result of that. One pa, uh, piece I want to bring your attention to, our dropout rate. You might recall that in '21, we had a dropout rate of .7. We were incredibly proud of that. Our high school team has done a huge amount of work on that number. The story in 2022 is incredibly unfortunate. Jill, I think it was four, we had four students that were encouraged because of school choice to enroll in BMR. And take a fresh look, a new start. These are kids that were going to drop out of their current high schools. And they did. We have school choice, they were able to enroll here. They enrolled, never came, and they withdrew. So we take them on our rolls. It's unfortunate. I call out superintendents when that happens. I know Jill speaks to the special editor student service directors. Jill Fowler speaks to the principals, and everybody's kind of doing this. So I share that, not to never not own our data. You know that I own our data. But that really is not an accurate reflection. There are four students that never stepped foot, other than to register. They never came. And it's unfortunate. And the only way to change that is to change our school choice process. And that has other implications. So that certainly is a conversation. We usually discuss school choice in May, April, May, so that we can talk about then. It's, it's just really unfortunate because those really are not our kids in terms of, you know, that, that have been working with us. And you know, in a, in a school our size, four students is a huge number of students when you only have 400 as far as adding to, you know, a .7 or 1%. They can double those numbers very quickly. The grant update, and I'm not sure why this is pulling up so small, but...
We're thinking about Matt tonight.
Right? But I wanted to not only share with the committee and the community all the great work that our, our team has done to write grants, but more importantly, to highlight the majority of our grants are coming offline this year, at the end of this year. So we have worked very hard to embed all of this work over time because, you know, our, our approach has been, you know, you get the grant, but you then slowly over time build into your local budget what you need to sustain it after the grant is done, which we have done very well, and we'll talk about that when we get into the numbers. But I do want to make sure that the committee and the school district community understands that a lot of the grants we have written are coming offline in June of this year. Now, we are aggressively writing new grants. We have actually submitted just a couple this week, and we have a couple more on the horizon that are, none of them are even on here. So I don't want anyone to think that this is a one-and-done and we're not going after more grants. But because we talked about a lot of these last year in the budget process, I wanted to make sure to share out with the community that a lot of our grants are ending in June. But there will be new grants, and there will be new programs and new opportunities. But just really important to note. Two grants that are not coming offline, and I, and I do want the, these two amounts to really kind of stick with us because they are very important offsets to our budget as it relates to salaries. So you may be, I know everybody's familiar with the ESR money. ESR 1 was finished last year. ESR 2 is done in June. That was one that, that's coming offline. And ESR 3, we have one more year with. So our ESR 3, and we listed the positions here, and we listed the amounts. So you can see exactly the totals. And then Title 1 is an entitlement grant that comes from the federal government. And you can see the positions we have are the title funds and the amounts that we'll be using to offset our, our staff salaries this year. You'll see that our, our grants are used for our teachers, our staff, for our intervention. This isn't fluff, this is, these aren't add-ons. It's very clearly connected to very intentional work to help intervene and close gaps for kids. And so we'll talk a little bit about some of the work that we did with our ESR 2 grant in our budget this year and how we were able to build these in. You might remember when, I don't know, I sat here a couple of years ago and we were talking about some of these grants. We said that over time, we'd build these positions in. That's what we're doing. And so there is no hard stop. We've got seven positions that were grant-funded, now we have to take them in the budget. That, that isn't happening because that's not how we've been doing this work. We've been doing our best to build them in as we can. And frankly, we also made a commitment to the towns. You may recall that the ESR positions shouldn't be forever positions. If we're doing the interventions right and we can narrow those gaps, the learning gaps for kids, we shouldn't need them forever. And we don't. Some of them we're able to take offline as we go. But this is where we stand, and I want you to remember that number. It's about $400,000 because you're going to see that come up in a minute when we look at the actual expenditures, projected expenditures for FY24. And if I'm moving too quickly through any of this, just by all means, ask me to slow down. As promised, this focus on how we built FY23 is going to be present in every conversation. Because we did a lot of work last year to get the budget to where the towns would be able to manage the amounts. And that, we say that very respectfully, by the way, but that is because we have no control over our minimum local contribution. So the state increased the minimum local contribution of the MLC to both the town of Blackstone and Millville by over 6%. So right from the gate, they were informed that they would need to give the town, the district, 6% more. That was a tremendous hit to us because we're not going to go forward to the communities and say, oh, on top of that 6%, you also need to give us another X%. So we went through our additional contributions and looked for ways to try to reduce everything we could, every penny we could, to get that number down to about $414,000. And we did. And have said repeatedly that we can't do that again this year. It's just not there. And you'll see tonight when we present this, there's not a lot of wiggle room here. Or any at all, frankly, unless we want to start talking about positions and people, which we don't want to do. We also used the list of offsets underneath to reduce the town contributions. And we will work very hard this year as well to look at things like E and D, Circuit Breaker, our IDEA, the entitlement grants, which is Title 1. Our CDC grant is coming offline. That was one of those grants, and we're just not going to have that. So our nursing pattern will go back to what we had prior to COVID. I mean, I think it's fine, I think it's time to do that. We'll be ready to do that. And then the ESR grants, again, as you know, we're looking at about $180,000 from ESR 3, and that's it. So we will do our best. One of the grants that we're looking at right now, Jill, PG, and our lead coach, Mary Colonino, are looking at, essentially, it's called a Student Opportunity Act grant that is built for communities like ours, but we need to be very aggressive about going after it, which we will be. We're going to be submitting it next week and looking at how we can bring some additional support in to our students with special needs and our English language learners. So there's a lot of work to do there. But we, just so the committee and the community knows, we will remain vigilant about going after every penny we can. The cost drivers, again, we know, we talked about these at our meeting in December. And the focus of our work being around minimizing those non-academic barriers for students, our focus on social studies and moving forward with the new social studies curriculum. One change from our last meeting, we did have a district-wide meeting and decided that we would focus on science next year, that we wanted to bring that back into, back into the forefront as far as curriculum goes and look to see where we need to find to and revise that program for science, PK to 12. And of course, we know that we're going to stay focused on our career development and our college prep work. Again, we know the other cost factors, we talked about these. And we can delve into these a little bit deeper when we actually get into the real numbers. But these are the other, these are kind of the other pieces that are not necessarily the work in quotes, but that have major implications on the budget. Things like utilities, safety detail, we'll need to talk about, our MLC again, our health insurance costs, et cetera. Again, a little bit deeper, these are the strategic priorities. And, and you know, not to be redundant, but again, looking at that next level of science, additional support for math, our social studies program that we need to move forward with, our focus on SEL, and of course, our facilities work. That remains very much at the forefront of FY24 as it relates to hopefully a new building project. So what does all of this lead to? And so in front of you, for our school committee, we have our cost projections for FY23. For those friends at home that are tuning in, I know Tim's going to bring this graphic up so that you can see it. You want to be looking at...
I was just going to say, can you clarify which is the latest?
You need to be looking at, yep. So you want the document that was in front, was not in your packet. And if you go to the bottom corner, it says 5.26. You want the 5.26. The other version, you can rip it and toss it. So I'll give everybody a second to find that one.
Is it possible to date these, like, budget things?
I'd be happy to.
They are, they do become fast and furious, and it's helpful if, like, in this case, usually I date my stuff when I get here, but we had both of these in our available, and then I mixed them up.
No problem, I'll be happy to. So the one, the one we would date January 12th would be the one in the bottom right-hand corner. This is 5.26. Sure. So what we're looking at here is a, we did the budget very different this year. We still had the involvement in the process as we always had. Our teacher leaders are working with the principals that are essentially feeding this information up into one master document. That master document is actually on the screen in front of you, and it is broken down by function code. So all of those function codes are actually feeding into the handout that you have in front of you. But as we get into our workshops, and we wanted to get into the weeds, as Tammy loves to say, we actually have the function code breakdown right there in one master sheet. So for instance, if we want to delve into what information management looks like for our proposed FY24 expenditures and the 1450 function code that is totaling $432,969.55, we actually will be able to click on it, and we can get into it right there. You can see all the detail of what's in there. So there's no guesswork, there's no 160-page binder where you need a microscope to look at the actual information. You literally, if you bring your laptops, which I would encourage everybody to do when we get into the workshops, and Dr. Remka presents her budget, you can click on the complex in this tab, and everything is literally right there. And the, the good news about that and the importance, Tammy, I'm glad you mentioned the dating thing, is because this will change very fast and furious as we move through this process. Because when you make one change to the budget, it immediately feeds in to the overall expenditures. It just runs like essentially a Google workbook. So we did it this way this year to try to streamline the process and make it way easier for everybody. So you, you know, as we're going through the workshops, you, you will be able to see real-time the implication of removing $15,000 here, $10,000 there, $5,000 there, and $6,000 there. It instantly feeds into this and will show you the overall calculation in terms of dollars and percentages. So we were trying to, and you know, because we were kind of resetting this anyway, it's, we don't have a finance director. We were doing this very different. And I will share, I think this is the best budget we've ever put together, frankly, because of how we've done it, because of the level of involvement and the amount of depth and the amount of, of people that have been involved in this process has been tremendous. So the headlines for the budget, because the next couple of meetings are all focused on workshops. If you look at the proposed FY, total proposed FY24 budget amounts, you can see the totals for each one of our function codes. If you go to the column to the right, you will see the FY23 certified. So this is what's in every column in each function code right now. You can see the highlighted column is the difference in dollar amount. So the green obviously is an increase, the red is a decrease. And we can talk about those reds in a moment. And my sense is you'll want to delve into some of that tonight, which is fine. And then the column all the way to the right is the percentage difference. I want to bring your attention down to the bottom. The total proposed FY24 budget, and I want to pause before I share this number. That is a number that is proposed before the school choice and the charter tuition is added. You'll notice that the school choice and charter tuition is not included in FY23. It is, we know it's over like 1.3 million. We did not include that in FY24 because we won't know till March 1st what that number is. We have a new governor who has eight weeks to put her budget together, and she has made it clear that her and her team will use the eight weeks, which is fine. But that means for us, as a regional district that has to certify their budget 45 days before the first town meeting, we're going to have two weeks to get all of those state numbers in, which is the first run-through of those cherry sheets before we certify that budget, our budget. So there's a lot of pressure there for us that we have no control over. Every regional district's under the same pressure this, this budget cycle because we have a new governor, and that's, those are the, that's the law, frankly, when a new governor comes in. So I did not include the school choice and charter number because I don't have it for FY24 yet. So instead, we're doing apples to apples. We're just looking at district expenses. So know that the number is going to change because we don't have the school choice and charter numbers yet. But that's okay, we removed them from FY23 in this process so that we can compare expenditures to expenditures. So if you look at the certified FY23, you will see a number at the bottom that is $27,135,164. We know that actual certified number is higher because of the school choice and charter number. That number is actually $28,661,304. That doesn't necessarily matter for the discussions tonight because we backed those school choice and charter numbers out. In FY24, what we are proposing for our district budget But that number will change when we get the school choice and charter numbers. However, dollar to dollar, that is an increase of $1,427,644.99, which is a total increase on the budget of 5.26%. However, remember I asked you to hold on to that $400,000 number from ESR 3 and from Title 1? Because ESR 3 and Title 1 numbers will be applied to our salaries as offsets before anything actually happens, which will bring our actual percentage increase down to a 3.8%. So when you apply that $400,000 from ESR 3 and from Title 1, that overall number actually drops to 3.8. So it is not as high as it looks.
Those are words to our ears, or music to our ears.
Let me pause here because that is a lot of info and a lot of numbers. And again, this is just the first walkthrough. The next workshops, we delve like very deep into the weeds on this. But we were able to get it to a 3.8. The 3.8% increase includes our two STEM teachers that we needed to include from the regional agreement work that we did at the elementary level. It includes the MAP interventionists from ESR 2, so that's in here. It also includes the two additional positions that the school committee approved for the middle school. The foreign language teacher, if you recall, and the second STEM teacher. It does, it does include all of those positions. We did a lot of work around reconfiguring our hiring, readjusting our, our function... We did a lot of work around reconfiguring our hiring, readjusting our, our function code lines to try and get the numbers to the right place. Are there any initial questions or do you want me to talk about some of the reds? Because you might be wondering about the red lines, like how did that happen? Because some of them are very, most of them are very simple to explain, but it might be helpful to hear, maybe start with those. If you look at the, the first call, the first amount that's in red, it's under school leadership, the $187,538.47, that was just simply moving salaries. We had to move salary, the right salaries out of, out of there, into different lines. This was the other thing that this allowed us to do is an opportunity to clean up and make sure things are appropriately placed and for FY24. The library and media center, that was just simply moving the high school library media position out of there and into teacher salaries. It just wasn't in the right place. So we still have the position, we just put it in the right place. Medical and health services, that is a reduction in medical and health services. We have grants coming offline and so we do have a reduction there. Transportation, that is through our special education work. You might remember we bought a van last year. Jill has done amazing work with Jen in her office to actually combine routes and runs. So we picked up in district four additional runs with the van that we purchased to save us that money. So you might remember, we bought a $70,000 van, right? That was a one and done kind of payment, yes, there's maintenance, but, and we hired a driver, but for next year alone, it's going to save us over $100,000 just in combining runs. So a big kudos to Jill PG and to Jen for their hard work on that. The retirement is just a small, that's a, that's a MT RS thing that we have to do, that's a small amount. The non-public programs, we actually have a student graduating, so to speak, aging out of our system and moving on to the adult version of the system that he was in with us. I think he's going to be 23. So that's actually one student in terms of the savings there. Our tuition to collaboratives, there is, we are projecting this year that we will be able to prepay BICO. Remember, you might recall the committee authorized us to prepay them in the spring of this year for FY23. We're going to ask you again in the spring to allow us to pay them early again from, which is completely allowed, we were able to do that. But we're looking to pay the tuition of two students at about $116,000. That will bring that number down. Remember, their, their tuition went up another 12%. We should be able to, because we had a couple of students that actually didn't, didn't attend the collaborative this year, so we actually have some tuition savings. We can use that to offset next year's tuition. So we'll actually see a reduction in that line where most districts increased significantly in that line. And then out of district transportation, again, that was just through some combining of, of runs that we were able to do. That's a little bit about the red lines I thought you might be interested in. Our teacher classroom lines, if you go to 2305, 2310, that's our classroom regular and classroom special education. Most of those are just contractual obligations. It was, our increase this year was 2.75%. So we had to do that. We also wanted to make sure that we included the math interventionist and those two STEM teachers in the additional positions that the middle school asked for. And I will tell you, the way that we have run our HR this year, I think, has been stellar in that we have essentially a master Google sheet that myself and a few other individuals are working off of, that track every single employee and every single replacement, exiting salary, new salary, exiting benefits, new benefits. We get real-time data so that when we did this, when we actually combed through the personnel, which is $16 million of our budget, it's a huge part of our budget, these are real numbers. We were able to move out, so we have an individual that's starting in two weeks, his salary's in here, we already replaced it. So this is as close to, and anyone that's, you know, you understand that like the personnel changes are a lot and so, in, in any business. So keeping up with that, I think we have as about, about as a tight system as we're going to get. And so these are, you know, the individuals that are sitting in these seats and even will be frankly in the next couple of weeks. So these changes are as close to what we are thinking we will have as we can get. They include our social studies program that we're going to need, that's under textbooks, we're going to hear about that in one of our workshops. They also include our utilities. If you look down at function code 4120 and 4130, we'll hear more about this when Scott presents, but you can see those two lines alone went up $200,000. That's our gas, our electricity, our propane, that's just keeping the buildings warm and running. So we saw huge increases there. Our benefits, function code 5200, that is based, you'll see there's another, that's almost a half a million dollar increase, that's based on a 4%. I'm hoping we can get that lower. I was told to plan for 10. My response was we will find a new, a new provider. We were not paying that. And the comment was, well, what will you pay? That's not how we do this, this isn't, we're not buying a car. So lots to discuss there still. My hope is that number will come down. But that is based on a 4% increase. And again, you know, over the workshops, we get like really deep into this. Like you'll be looking at itemized budgets for these things, but I thought, you know, it might be helpful to start with some of the big-ticket numbers that are probably jumping out at you as you take a, take a first swipe at this. The 5.2 looks large. Last year when we started this process, we were at 7. So just, you know, I think actually, I think it was 7.8. So just keep that in mind. And we got down to where, you know, we certified at just over 3%. We're already at just over the 3% with very little room to move. You'll see as we start hearing from our cost center managers, they're, the schools are not asking for anything. You're not going to hear, you know, usually when we present the budgets, you've got like what we have, what we need, the two columns, the positions, the amounts, you're going to see none of that. You're going to see what we have because we're not asking for, this is essentially a level service budget, which I think is important for our community to hear. And that's because of the good work that everybody has done. And Tammy, you've mentioned this a few times, you know, it's one thing to build, but we have to maintain, right? We don't want to build, reduce, build, reduce, build, reduce. We're at the point now where we need to just essentially maintain what we have. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any questions on this? And again, no, there's so much conversation to come through our workshops on this.
We'll save it for another day.
Okay. If we can go back to this slide deck, there's just another quick, you know, Tim will pull that back up for us. My buddy all week, who's moved through different presentations. And then this is just the next steps. So cost center manager meetings, we have on Tuesday, the 17th. I will do my best to scan the packets into everybody before that. Usually your packets are delivered, there's, it's just, we don't have enough turnaround time. Like I wouldn't, I won't be able to get them to you by Tuesday. So we'll scan them in and send them Tuesday. I'll bring a hard copy with, with me. But honestly, if you have a device and you want to bring it and you're, like that's great, if you don't, that's okay too. We'll have a laptop connected to one of these, the Usonics, and we can zip through all these things for everybody. So all the budget lines. But if you have a device and you want to bring it, by all means, it's going to be a workshop, kind of roll up the sleeves, we're going to get into it. So we're going to do that on the 17th. We're also going to do similar with the district departments on the 26th. We have a hold on the 31st. At the end of the meeting on the 26th, you all can decide if you feel we need that meeting or not. We may decide, I just want to forecast this because you know I love to forecast things. We may decide, I should have gotten the weather, that we don't need the 31st, but we actually want a meeting after March 1st when the governor's budget comes out. Because we're going to get all of those revenues, we're going to know a lot more information than we'll have by the 31st of January. So you might decide, you know what, we've done enough for now, let's meet with the towns and get into it, and then we probably will need another meeting before we actually meet on the 9th of March to certify once the governor's budget comes out. Does that make sense? So we might just, put that out there. Any questions on this stage, where we're at? All right. So lots more to come on FY24, but I am very proud of the team, I'm proud of the work that everybody's put in. And I do think we've put together a budget that I think, once we get into it, will make a lot of sense to the school committee when you see the numbers behind, like the big numbers and how we got there.
Perfect.
Okay. That concludes my report.
And we will move on to the business office report.
Excellent, thank you. So just very briefly, in your packet, we have just a few, yes, I'm using my, my business manager license now. If you look in your packet, we have an update on FY23 and where we are as of January 10th. Just so you know, I think I shared this at the last meeting, we run this report literally the, like minutes before we send your packet out. This is as up-to-date as the warrants that are right in front of you, which is great. So you have as real-time information as we can get. There is nothing different on here as far as revenues or expenditures than what we have talked about in past updates. So no line has increased significantly more in terms of, you know, the expenditures than what you've seen. But of course, if there are any numbers you want to discuss, we're happy to delve into that. You can still see that we're running a very healthy bottom line. If you look on the second page at the budget balance column, that 1.7. Are there any questions on any of the expenditures? And again, all the big ones that like we've, I've already shared, like reimbursement grants and all the other things and, you know, the asbestos expenses, the security detail, you know, but I'm happy to jump into any of these if anyone has any follow-ups. Our revenues are coming in as they are supposed to be, which is great. From chapter 70, we get the deposits, we check in Unibank as we're supposed to, we're getting the assessments. Thank you to our towns, they're doing a great job of keeping right up with everything. So we're running a healthy cash flow and a healthy end balance. Moving on to our personnel reports, nothing significant here, this is just to be received and placed on file. You'll see most of the appointments are just, we are adding to our substitute teacher bench. We did unfortunately have a resignation in our foreign language department at our high school. And we have already replaced that position. So that individual is coming to us with 12 years' experience at the high school, middle and high school level. He's a native English, native Spanish speaker and has three degrees in teaching world language from URI. That is a school my son is interested in going to, so you can imagine I picked his brain in my interview process as well. But we are super excited to have Juan joining our, our staff. So that position's already been filled.
Okay.
So that is to be received and placed on file and that is the business office report.
Thank you. We will move on to the facilities report.
And the, under facilities, there is no use of facilities requests. We have two, they're not till June. They're working out some calendaring issues, if that's a word, and I'm going to bring them to the committee in February. So we actually will not end up needing that tonight.
So at the high school, Industrial Burner completed the installation of the pressure relief valves. Both boilers are now up and running. And we'll be filing for the grant to get reimbursed on that. We also, they also did repairs to the boilers, as you know, through the email, we lost heat on the 26th. There was no damage, no frozen pipes or anything. They ended up adding larger gas lines so that would get more gas to the pilots. And they adjusted the electrodes to ignite the pilot. So, and they changed one of the regulators. And since then, they've been running good, so we alternate them now every other week, one or two runs. Heating coil in the lower teacher's workroom was damaged due to a coil freezing up that wasn't related to the boiler that day. That happened earlier in December. And that was caused by an outside damper being stuck in the open position. So cold air was just dumping on it and it froze. Fortunately, it was a small room, it was on the first floor, so no damage was just done to the ceiling tiles or anything and it was very easy to clean up. At the middle school, so that circulator pump still possesses to be an issue. We just received the parts and they should be installed next week. And JFK, other than one of our new water bottle filling stations failed, these were installed a couple of years ago through a grant, as you know, due to the copper and whatnot, but. Michael Allen, the head custodian, was able to take it down, take it apart and found that it was just a ground wire that came off the circuit board. So we started it back on, put it back up, everything's good. Millville Elementary School, the circulator pump on number two. I'm just having problems getting people out here to look at these. I've reached out to Industrial Burner and they said they're going to send somebody out. I reached out to N.B. Kelly and they also said they'd be sending somebody out. I called another company today, Boston Mechanical, and they're actually more familiar with these pumps. They said they will give me a quote tomorrow and a date as to when they will be sending somebody out. And that's the same thing with Siemens. I reached out again to the project manager that, that came out, scoped the project, gave us the quote, made several attempts to get in touch with him and he's just failing to call me back. He called, he sent me an email on the 28th saying that they would be out first week of January to start on the software. Second week of January, they still haven't showed up. So I reached out to his supervisor today and he immediately got back in touch with me, was very apologetic, and he said he will be giving me a start date tomorrow as well.
We have a new strategy.
Yeah. No more Mr. Nice Guy.
No.
Unfortunately, it's just, you know, I don't know if it's shortage of labor or what, but it's, it's unacceptable either way. I mean, some of these companies we spend millions of dollars with, you know, with boiler projects and boiler service, it's just unacceptable. Also, they had a water pump, a circulator pump fail on the water system. We notified Northeast Water Solutions, they instructed us to just shut down that pump. That's actually a brand-new pump that they installed, so I'm assuming it was just a loose fitting or something. It didn't cause any damage to the building. The water treatment plant was still up and running, so everything was good. It was just a spare pump, there's three of them. And that's about it. Any questions, concerns? Lots of concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to school committee forum. Does anybody have anything to share?
No.
Sorry. There is no executive session this evening and upcoming meetings. We have a school committee workshop on Tuesday, January 17th at 6:00 PM at Hartnett Middle School. Thursday, January 26th at 6 o'clock at Hartnett Middle School. And then Tuesday, January 3rd at 6 o'clock at Hart, I mean, did I say 33rd, 30th? 30, January 31st at 6 o'clock at Hartnett Middle School, and that was the one that we might not need, is that correct?
Right.
And then school committee meeting, February 9th as well. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Second. Oh, do we have to do a roll call? Do we do a roll call?
That's for executive session.
Thank you.
It's all okay.
All right. Just study what you're...